Okay, so we're here. It is, this is GenGov. It is seven o'clock at seven oh five. And, uh, call to order. Hey Scott? All the people are going back in here. Uh, roll call. We do not, we have a, me and Martina and Mike, do you want to sit in for now? Are you willing to sit in, John?
Can a council sit in?
What, we've, remember, we set it up that, we set up that rule, we set up that rule where you can point somebody to sit in if you're...
Well, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, Steve, you have a, whatever you want. John, you can...
You only need three.
You only need three, or huh?
I can look.
Whatever, okay.
Well, if you want.
No, you're good.
Okay.
Uh, item number three is consider and accept GenGov minutes for June seventh. It should be in the packet. Stand down and find it. Or, are they in the packet?
I didn't see them.
If that's the case, then we can postpone it, because I don't think I saw them either, so.
I didn't know they needed a council.
Okay, so I guess we'll skip over that one. Um, item number four is...
Let the next people worry about it.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, discuss the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Denise Clements to the Cable Advisory Board for a three-year term effective June twenty twenty-three, I said July twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Any comments or questions?
I don't know. Any comments? She doesn't have any comments.
She's very quiet.
She does a lot of work on that.
Oh, yeah.
She's the only committee member.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah.
But we're, we were just teasing, because she's, that's usually, that's usually her seat.
She puts a couple of shows together, I think.
Oh, and other things, yes.
She did the, the Wells Building, and she did the, the other apartments down by the AO.
She's been doing recordings for various things, being to, sitting, sit down in that office upstairs for various people over the year, or two years, and she's been doing this now, so. And she is the only member, basically, so. It would be nice if we get some more people to participate in this candy. I think there are four seats open right now. Speaking to anybody who's watching, so if you are interested in cable, please sign up. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Uh, item number five is discuss and review the manager's recommendation to reappoint Kevin Cristo to the Board of Registars for a three-year term from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Any comments or questions on that? Hey Maddie, do you have anything to say about Kevin being on the Board of Registars? That's the end.
I do not. I really, we don't really have a say. It's the Republican Town Committee that, um, suggests people, so absolutely not. He's always here for our elections and stuff.
He's been on that committee a long time.
He's been there for a long time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you know how long he's been there?
I don't know.
Fifteen years or something like that, yeah, has he?
No, I don't know.
He's been there a long time.
I think a lot of his pay years was on, and then, um, Latin America was on. So I don't know. I don't really know.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The ones who show up, I approve of that.
This is true. That always helps. Anyway, all those in favor? Item number six, discuss and review the manager's recommendation to reappoint Michael Daniels to the Liquor Board for a three-year term effective July first through, uh, thirty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on that? Is anybody here to comment on it?
Must be okay then.
Okay. All those in favor? Uh, let's see. Uh, number, uh, let's see. Number seven is discuss and review the manager's recommendation to reappoint Melissa Hilli to the Local Historical District Commission. That should be Local Historical District Study Committee, because it's not a commission yet. A three-year term from July first, twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-six. Say that again?
What was that?
Is it a commission or a study committee?
It's a study committee. It's never, it's never been appointed as a commission.
You sure?
Because we, we haven't passed the bylaw to create one.
Alright, I'll change that.
They are, they are in the process of doing the by, they've been doing the bylaw study to look at creating a potential local historic district, but that still has to go to the council and to the voters. And it's not a commission until that can happen. So at this point, it's a study committee.
Alright, I'll change that.
Yes.
So how long can a study committee continue to operate?
I have no clue.
It's a historical study committee.
It's been, it, it's been in some form of existence off and on for at least ten years. Probably even longer than that. At one point, Steve Brady was the only member.
And it was posted, like, every month.
And nothing happened, because nobody else existed on it.
And Steve would, like, laugh. He, he was like, "I'm the only member."
Yeah. Kind of like Denise and Kevin.
He said, "So, I have the meetings at home."
Right.
I mean, he was just kidding.
Him and his beer.
Yeah, did he have meetings?
No, no, he didn't.
He talked to himself. Yeah, he'll let himself.
He was like, "Do you agree with me, Steve?" Yep.
No, I don't.
Right. He would have lively discussions with himself.
Right. Anyway, so are there any questions or comments on this one? I mean, I know she's been on for, like, what, two years or something like that? I haven't heard any complaint, any complaints about it. I mean, she's a realtor, she's, and she has, does have a fair grasp of what's going on in, on in town, so.
It's nice that somebody's interested.
Yeah, totally. All those in favor? Eight, discuss and review the manager's recommendation to reappoint Virginia Rapo to the, uh, Southwest Cultural Council from July first through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Is it Rapo?
Maybe it's Rapo.
Uh, because I went to school with her.
Okay, Rapo, okay. Any comments or questions on this one? Yeah, good.
No.
No? Oh, hey, John, do you know, is, I, I know the Cultural Council, um, has, they have a certain number, they can only do, was it, two terms at a time, and then they have to get off? Do we know how many she's been, been doing?
No.
I recall this kind of last year.
It came, it came up with, um, what's his name? What's the term's name? I'm just trying to look at it. Hey Maddie, maybe you can ask this. Do you know how many, do you know how many terms of Virginia Rapo has served in the Cultural Council?
Nope, but I can go and, uh, get the book, if you want.
Because I know that the state law require, has a certain limit before you have to, before you have to take time off.
Yeah, let me go look.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we just step over this one and bring it back?
Yeah, well, well, which is your concern for that one? Okay, item number nine is the manager's recommendation to, to reappoint Virginia Rapo to the Council on Agent for another three-year term.
Any problems with that one?
I am not aware of any, because I don't think the law requires that one to have a term length.
No, probably there's a term about Council on Agent.
Alright. I don't know why Cultural Council has one, but it does.
I think that's a state thing.
I think it does, yeah. It's state law. Any, so I, I don't have, I need a motion.
Oh, so moved. Second.
All those in favor? Uh, number ten is the manager's recommendation to reappoint Paul Tetro to the Airport Commission.
Second.
Any comments on that one? Anybody? Be alert. Sorry, that was a uneeded reference. Um, all those in favor? Uh, number eleven, discuss an accounting transfer for twenty-one thousand dollars from Town Council Reserve to postage to cover postage invoices to the end of fiscal twenty-three. I assume that's yours there, Christine?
I submitted it on behalf of several departments that utilize that account regularly.
Okay.
So it's not anything my department handles. The Assessor's Office handles the postage lease out of that account. And then the Collector's Office handles Kelly and Ryan bills, and then the Treasurer's Office handles the Comstar billing and its postage on those bills.
Okay.
Um, postage wasn't properly budgeted with the rate increases that happened back in January.
Oh.
And then, due to inflated postage costs and, um, other things not being budgeted properly into the fiscal twenty-three budget, we had raised charges. So this is to cover, um, the deficit in fiscal twenty-three.
Okay.
And then I attached the invoices that correspond to, um, what we need to pay, and then hopefully that'll cover the rest of the fiscal twenty-three charges. But we're gonna run into this issue in fiscal twenty-four as well.
That's what I was just thinking.
Because we were, this economy is level funded over the past several years.
Exactly, I was just gonna say.
And we're rating when we're gonna run into a budget increase this coming January, which is all postage rates as well.
Another post, so what's the post is going to?
I don't know. I have to pull the rates from the postal website.
Okay, because I...
But I know flat rate, all, all the postage fees, not only stamps, but all the flat rate and package fees are all going up.
Because this is, this is a good half again, what we, what we budgeted for. I mean, we budgeted, I think it was forty-four grand for postage, townwide, if I remember correctly. And this is almost half again.
Well, this was...
If you're adding that into it.
But also, um, what's happened in the past, that didn't happen in fiscal twenty-two, was any remaining postage buzz, budget got loaded onto the machine for postage, and that didn't happen in fiscal twenty-two at the end. So we had, I'm not sure, that, I wasn't part of that, but in past practice, if there was five thousand dollars left in the postage budget, we would take that extra five thousand dollars, and we would front-load the postage machine.
Right.
There was one full fiscal year that the postage machine didn't get front-loaded, where we purchased excess postage. So we ran through our surplus, and now this is the result of running through our surplus.
Oh.
So we always, we've always carried surplus postage on our postage machine.
Okay.
And we expended all of our surplus, and then we had to backfill the surplus.
That's interesting. Okay, so who normally handles, um, making sure that that happens?
I can't speak to fast practice. I'd have to do some research on that. Because that was prior to my joining.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think part, I think part of the problem there is we've had so much changeover in major department offices that, that I could easily see something like that going to the grass.
I believe that fell through the crack at the end of last fiscal year with, with, with leaving, because he left in December, so I believe that's something that he probably made sure happened prior to him leaving. So therefore, it fell through the crack when it came to end of, end of fiscal twenty-two.
Okay, that's... Yeah, I think we need to clarify exactly who's responsible. Something like that's, we need to figure out exactly who's responsible for that and probably clarify, you know, maybe, maybe assign it to somebody or something like that. That's, that, that would be up to the manager, I think. Um, do you know anything about this, Maddie?
Postage?
Yeah.
No. All I know is I have to put my postage through, that's it.
Okay.
And Kevin Cristo's only been there since two thousand eighteen.
Uh, that's not what we're asking about.
I know, Kevin, you asked her. I have the book open.
Hey, she's giving you all the information.
I know.
It seems like he's been there forever.
It does, okay. Okay, anyway, um...
But now that I have it on my radar, I know what's something to take care of if we have the excess funds to take care of. I can make sure it's on my radar.
Okay. So with the fact that we have this, um, uh, this kind of deficit in postage, has that been an issue as far as actually getting stuff mailed out?
No.
It hasn't, okay.
But, because, because our postage machine has postage on it, but now we have the deficit in the account that we need to take care of, and then make sure we have the funds to carry us through for the rest of the fiscal year.
Okay.
And I have attached the invoices as backup as far as what we need to get paid.
Okay, okay.
And then I'm projecting out to carry us through the rest of the fiscal year.
Right, yeah, I get that, I get that. Well, there's only two weeks left.
Right, but then we're, we're gonna be getting bills in July that...
That go to this year, yeah, that's true, that's true, that's true. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Mike?
Uh, just a couple of questions. First of all, I'm, I'm not quite sure I'm understanding. You had the funds, and at the end of the year, they didn't get transferred into the postage?
Correct, so when I, when I tried doing some legwork, when we had fiscal twenty-one, there was, I believe, eight thousand dollars remaining in the postage budget. So seven thousand of that got sent to the postage company to load the machine with seven thousand dollars to front-load the machine, so the machine had seven thousand dollars in postage.
Right.
In fiscal twenty-two, that didn't happen. So any postage that was in there got expended and used, so we never front-loaded the machines to, and that, so we depleted our surplus. So over, over fiscal twenty-two, we depleted that extra surplus of seven thousand dollars.
So the money was back to the town?
We were using it. So in fiscal twenty, we threw in a surplus of five thousand dollars. In fiscal twenty, I'm just using numbers, I don't, I'd have to pull them to get exactly.
Right, right.
Fiscal twenty-one, we threw in another surplus of seven thousand dollars. Fiscal twenty-two, we didn't throw any surplus. We did, and we've been depleting. Fiscal twenty-three, there was no surplus from fiscal twenty-two, and we've been depleting our entire surplus. We've been putting postage on the machine as we needed to, but we depleted all of our surplus funds.
Right.
So then my other question is, um, just looking at these invoices, if something is coming from a, um, water demand billing, excise initial billing, excise, sewer, wouldn't those bills be paid for through the Enterprise Fund, not Council Reserve? When each one of those bills, wouldn't the funds be taken from each individual excise or, um, Enterprise Fund, water, sewer, the excise taxes, the, you know, automobile that you pay? So rather than take that money from Council Reserve, I would think it would come from each Enterprise Fund. Because I know that, let's say that if I live in a house and I don't get water and sewer, now you're using my tax dollar to pay for a water and sewer billing. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, that ma, that makes some sense. I think, I think from a, I think from a, uh, kind of pulling everything in one place together, I think that's, I would understand it, that that's probably why it's coming from Council Reserve.
But the postage, the postage account itself is the general fund.
It's a general fund, yes. I agree with that.
So that's why it was...
Why would that be? Because if, if you're paying a water bill with it, I would think it would come from the water stabilization account or the water billing, not general fund.
It always has been general fund though. So it's, uh, postage has always come from general fund.
Oh, it's for water?
Yeah, it's always come from general fund. I mean, it kind of...
It's, but it's also excise taxes, also, it's...
Everything.
It's all of, it's all...
It's everything that the town mails out. Yeah.
Okay. We can probably move it.
Yeah, I understand ballots.
Yep.
We all can vote.
Yeah.
Right, but that's going, that's going through the, but that's going through the postage machine when we load the post, the postage machine.
Right, I, yeah, I don't have a separate postage.
That's going, that's going through the machine. So when we load the postage, when we load the postage on the machine, that's what's bad, that's what Maddie's using.
Right.
When I mail out my ten ninety-nine, that's the postage I'm using.
I get that. But what was presented here tonight are all bills from water, sewer?
Those are all the Kelly and Ryan bills that come out of the Collector's, that the Collector's Office pays.
Mm-hmm.
And all, all those bills are paid out of the general fund.
Okay. I just was curious why that is that way, when I would think it should come out of the Enterprise Fund. But it's gotta be paid, it's gotta be paid, I'm just saying.
Mm-hmm.
I don't understand why it comes out of the general fund.
I mean, it ends up, it ends up being with the budget somewhere anywhere, so, yeah.
Yeah, the water and the sewer budget.
Yeah.
Alright.
Well, maybe you can remember that for next year, when you're budgeting to, to split those into, into the correct categories.
No, I, I understand what she's saying. It's one postage, they're putting all their money into postage. But I would think if it's for a water and sewer bill, they should get the money from the water and sewer accounts, not general taxes, but...
Yeah. Maybe.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Okay. Okay, let's see. I guess go back a little bit.
That just about depletes our general, uh, Council Reserve, doesn't it?
It's, gonna be getting pretty close, yeah. Do you know how much we have in Council Reserve? After this transfer?
Uh, let me look back.
Yeah, I think it's, it should be in here, actually.
Yeah, it says there is twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirteen.
As of that transfer. So when you take the twenty-six thousand, that off, that twenty-one, that's five thousand.
So we got five thousand and change, okay.
I've never seen it go that low, I mean, Council Reserve.
It hasn't generally...
Alright.
Okay. Let's see here. Okay, we are at, uh, I'm, I'm agendaing. Item number twelve.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Before you get too far, why don't you go back to item eight?
Oh, right, yeah, thanks. Thanks. Item eight was, uh, reappoint Virginia Rapo, Rapo.
She's been, um, appointed, offered on since two thousand and nine.
And, okay, so has she, and what's the, what's, the legal is two terms?
I don't know. I don't know what it is. That would be upstairs, the ones that appoint, sudden appointments, so, um, she has been, she was last appointed in twenty.
I think you only have to be on for a year.
Yeah. So she was seventeen, then she did twenty. So this would be her third term coming up. But there before seventeen, she was in fifteen, and then fourteen, and eleven.
So she's been running along?
Pretty much, yeah.
It would seem to me that Yvonne would know whether or not she should be, because those previous appointments going back a few years would have been Yvonne handling those going back a number of years. And it seemed to me that Yvonne would have a good working knowledge of whether or not the appointments should have, uh, taken place or not, and you would have seen a staggered amount. So I would assume that, and I know what assume means.
Yeah.
But I would make the assumption that, uh, owing to the, to the previous precedent, that seems to have been established, the previous staff upstairs, that, uh, this appointment can proceed.
Okay, um... I mean, I think we, I think we could probably send it up, just provide, provide that we get some clarification on whether it's state legal. I have nothing against her being on the commission, on, on the council, as far as I know, she's a dedicated job.
I'll, I'll call, um, Ted Barber tomorrow and find out what the term is. I'll get back to you.
But I, I remember, I remember at one point looking it up, and I'm trying to skim, skim through the, the page, the Mass Cultural Council page, but I'm not seeing the reference, so.
I know, I was just looking at it too, and I can't read it.
Yeah. I remember seeing the law at one point, but this was probably two years ago, so. So what do you want to do?
Let's send it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if there's a problem between now and then, they'll figure it out.
I should know of it.
Okay, we'll get clarification, okay.
Between I and I, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay.
We're on twelve.
Uh, let's see. We are on number twelve. Uh, necessary transfer request for thir, three fifty from data processing to office supply, special services, to cover necessary office supplies, and an office chair. Do you know anything about this, Christine?
Um, Rachel needs a new office chair. Like, hers is not proper functioning, so they need to replace her, her, the desk, the chair that's in her office. They need to replace it and grab some additional office supplies for the end of fiscal, the fiscal year. And the data processing line item that's in their budget, they don't utilize that any longer. That's something that was left over from Will, when he was in, in there with IT.
Mm-hmm.
So they were looking to transfer the funds from one line item to their office supply budget, just so they can take care of the necessary purchases.
So we, so I, was there, I don't remember, I remember this issue coming up when we were doing the budget. Um, did we? I don't, so I don't remember if it was in there, like, if they still have it, they had a processing line item. If so, it should have been slashed out of their budget. I don't remember that one. Nobody mentioned that during the budget cycle?
I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't either. Okay, um...
I'm just thinking, this is, it could be totally stupid, but shouldn't the IT person, that guy, I, I can't remember his name.
Victor.
I can picture him.
Victor.
Yeah, Victor. Shouldn't that be in his budget? And if he...
Data processing would be, yeah. That would, that is basically his budget, yes.
Right, but there was, there was also a separate line item that was in the assessor's line for data processing, in addition to all of the IT data processing.
Right.
And they don't need it anymore?
This isn't coming, when they look, when they backtrack the historical purchases that were in this line, it's something that they can just put into their office supplies.
Okay.
So they can essentially combine the two line items, and then own it just one going forward.
Okay.
It's, um, it happens every year, right?
It does, yeah, 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 yeah. It's over there. Okay. Any comments or questions on this? All those in favor? Item number thirteen, a clerk transfer request from fi, for five hundred bucks from Book Repair and Binding to repair, maintain, repair and maintain equipment, I assume that means, to cover the cost of typewriter maintenance. It is, in twenty twenty-three, it is amazing that we even use typewriters.
There are some things from which you absolutely can use nothing else.
I know, I understand that, but Maddie?
Yep, so, um, we've had our ma, we had maintenance this year done on our typewriters, however, um, just a couple weeks ago, Evelyn's died, and it was the motor.
Mm-hmm.
And it needed, we need to fix it. I mean, we use them every single day, so...
Yeah, we do.
So we don't even have any money in that um, account, so I have money in the book repair.
Okay.
So I just needed to transfer it so I could pay the typewriter maintenance.
At five hundred bucks, you could buy like three of them.
No.
Not anymore, so, not anymore.
Not anymore, and then they don't even make them anymore.
That's right.
So...
You fi, you find a good one, you hold on to it.
Why wouldn't you do this on a computer instead of typing?
There's some things that you just can't do on a computer.
No?
No.
You have to slide the paper in and get it lined up when you're typing on some of the forms.
Yeah, are you typing like things like birth certificates and things like that?
Mm-hmm. That was marriages, marriage attention, uh, marriage licenses. Yep, there's still a lot of stuff that we use it for.
Okay.
Unfortunately, but it is what it is.
Okay. All those in favor?
Yes.
Uh, yeah.
I just, um, looked on the Mass Cultural Council. In three years, members can serve a maximum of two consecutive terms or a total of six years, so...
And then they have to take a year off or a term off?
Mm-hmm.
Did it one year or one term off?
One year.
One year. So she's been on it for like fifteen straight years. That seems to be co, that seems to be common with our Cultural Council.
Oh, maybe she...
It's probably common in most Cultural Councils, because most people probably don't know what the law says.
And just took a year off.
She may have, I don't know.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, well, she was, oh, let's see, fifteen. No. Fifteen. So, yeah, she's been on it for a while.
So it's been at least three straight terms then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Both are reconsidered or postponed?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Reconsidering? Okay. Now I have another motion?
Postpone. Postpone this agenda.
To when?
Uh, next General Government Subcommittee after we are...
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Okay. I don't like doing stuff like that, but the law is law, so.
Yeah, it's kind of, I don't know, it's kind of a goofy law.
Yeah, it is kind of strange. I don't know why they created that law, but...
They get state money, don't they?
They do, but a lot, but a lot of people get state money.
And I think the state likes to keep their finger on...
But they're not very efficient about it, because, I mean, you've got, like, perfect example is, uh, the Redevelopment Authority has a state appointee that we haven't had, we haven't had a state appointee there for years and years now. And I think we're, we're, last night, we just rec, the council just recom, or P and D just recommended, and the first state appointee we've had in like, at least five years. So... So.
All right.
It's not a consistent thing. They're certainly not paying attention. Um, anyway, tangent, tangent ended. Um, number fourteen is to, is a town council transfer request of thirty-two dollars and forty-eight cents for miscellaneous expenses to office supplies, to cover office supplies for proclamations for town council. We actually have enough proclamations to even spend thirty-two bucks on?
We had, uh, three or four that I'm aware of.
We had a few, we had.
Yes, we did. We did, we did pretty well this year in recognizing people and events in town.
Yeah.
Which was a nice, a nice thing that we do.
Well, which, and I agree with that. I mean, just think, again, going back to the whole thirty-two dollar transfers are ridiculous. Um, but anyway, all those in favor?
Money.
It is. Um, okay, number fifteen, transfer, town manager transfer request of seven hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-two cents from other personal service tuition to conferences and meetings to cover the cost of the town manager's M M M A spring conference.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on this one, Christine or anybody?
You did go.
Well, I would hope so. We're paying for it, I hope so.
But we didn't, that, that line item, the, um, the conference ending line item was already depleted.
Yeah.
Prior to him registering, so now we have to, and he already went, so this account.
Okay.
Is.
Go back in time and.
So would, would this have been an, an account issue that, um, that Michael would have basically overspent? If it's been, if it was depleted before, before Charlie came home, came in?
You know, he used up all of his money not thinking about the next person. I mean, he didn't plan to go to this meeting.
Maybe not, but I don't know, I was curious about that, cause that's, I think that's kind of interesting.
I would have liked to ask the town manager a few questions about this one, but doesn't attend these meetings anymore.
Well, we can ask him at the council.
I guess I'll, I guess I'll have to ask him then. I do know that it is in his agreement.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
And our town manager shall be reimbursed for any expenses incurred in the performance of his or her duties or as an official representative of the town, including attendance by him or her at a civic or social event, so.
So the, and the, the, the M M A, M M A, the conference itself, we owe the funds directly to the conference company, and then we owe reimbursement to Charlie for the hotel expense.
So the, that's a few of the questions that I wanted to ask him, that, you know, and I, I'm not directing this at you. I'm just asking the question that, you know, we pay dues to this M M M A, and then we have to pay to attend their conferences, and we also have to pay for the, uh, stay at a Ocean Edge Resort and Golf Club. It's a pretty nice place for someone to stay for a conference, five hundred and sixty dollars to them for one night.
That's a priest, priest, expensive hotel, yeah.
I'll ask him, but, which he isn't here, but I will ask him at the town council, meaning what, what benefit did you get from going to this? So, how are you gonna affect the town? That's what I would like to know.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Where, where was this M M A meeting held?
It was in, uh, Braintree, I don't know.
It was Brewster.
Brewster?
You're right.
Down in Cape.
Brewster.
Ah, he just wanted a nice weekend on the Cape.
I don't, I would never say something like that.
Hope not. I don't know.
I just did.
Yeah, you did. Uh, full conference is two hundred and ninety-five bucks itself.
I don't know, why do we pay dues to these, to these groups?
And the hotels.
It's a great question.
This is only a profession that does that, though. There are many, many professional associations where you pay dues and then you have to pay to get into a conference.
Oh, yeah, that's true, that's true.
The school committee association is like that.
I agree.
It's true.
It's like, private sector does the same thing.
I'm just saying, what's the point of belonging to these groups if you have to pay?
Well, you get, I mean, cause the same thing with conservation, the MAC, MAC, and the boards of health committees and all the various other planning, the planning board people and all those stuff. They get, it's, they get the information on a regular basis that, that they, and, and there are some things that are free. Like I know, like Maureen does a bunch of con com stuff that's free online and stuff like that on a regular basis. And those kinds of things are kind of in your membership, and if you have, and if you go to the conference and certain other special events, you, you pay for them specifically. Um, so the, the membership covers, the general membership covers all that free stuff. And, and a lot of like, being able to call them up and get information, all this other kind of stuff that is kind of important.
Yep, and where is that information? Do we have it here or not?
We don't have it here, no.
We don't have it.
He just said it, I owe.
We probably will never see it.
That, but honestly, I've raised, I've, I've wondered if even councillors ought to be required to report on going to M M A.
I'm just saying, I know for my, for my M M A A A, I have an online portal where I can go in and get newsletters. Um, the courses that I have to go to, it's historically in an archive, so I can go back and get the downloads from my prior years, and even the classes where I'm in, I was in track two this past March. I can go in and see track three's data, and then there's, um, some of the classes for track three, there were like a global, not, not global, but they were like a session where I was in my class, but if you were in track three, and just, you can pick and choose, if you were beyond track three and you already had the certification, you can pretty much make your own schedule.
Right.
And some of the sessions are just sessions where you just sit, and it's more like, some of them are open forum styles, but you, there's PowerPoints.
Yeah.
I can go in and grab those PowerPoints after the fact and grab the, grab the information.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
It's still available for me to grab and actually utilize those as data sources.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And it's all there for prior years as well, so I can reference back to them if I need to.
And that's good, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but this is a resort and golf club, so.
Well, that's, that's a slightly.
I'm not sure.
What is it?
That's the.
All right.
All those in favor?
Maureen, is her hand up?
Oh, sorry.
I, I just wanna say, I think that's a great idea, that people report back. You know, I always report back to the Conservation Commission about different things that I've attended. Um, uh, I'm the only one who does it, and I just do it just because I think like, hey, the town is paying for this. We should all benefit from it, and so I'm like being a good little newbie, but, but I think that, uh, people who attend the M M A, you know, there's valuable information learned, and.
We should be sharing it.
You know?
Yep. Okay, number sixteen is a treasurer-collector transfer for fifty-three thousand five hundred from collector, treasurer-collector salaries and wages full-time to treasurer-collector special services to cover invoices for Strategic Municipal Services LLC for interim collector-treasurer services from February through the end of fiscal.
So.
Second.
You want, anything you want to say about this one?
I think that one kind of.
Kind of speaks for itself, yeah.
Kind of speaks for itself, just because we've had to utilize joint services longer than anticipated. But then it's also to cover some of the Kelly and Ryan invoices that we also have that are.
Okay. So how mu- how much should we end up spending on, on the interim treasurer-collector total? Do you know?
I would have to pull a report offhand with that.
Cause I think, cause it seems like it's a lot more than, like, for example, Lanny's salary.
Three to four months and ended up being almost an entire fiscal year.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I'm thinking that, I mean, with the costs that we've been paying, this is like half of the, I think this is, this is somewhat more than half of what Lanny's salary is. And so this is, and I know we've had several transfers for this, for this particular item over the course of the last couple of months, so.
And I intended to do a transfer sooner, but then didn't get onto, they didn't fast enough, so now this is kind of that transfer in there. Cause I was gonna have originally two transfers, and now this is just kind of one to take care of all of it.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that she didn't do a, do a good job or that we didn't need to get it done, it's just that, this is a perfect example why we need to avoid using interim services if we can avoid it. That's why we need our, these offices to help. Any comments or questions?
So this goes through the end of.
This will be through the end of the fiscal year.
So we are still utilizing that service?
Correct.
Is she, is she like helping Lanny?
There's, there's tra- there's, um, training with Lanny, and then she's still cleaning up some of the stuff that she was cleaning up prior to Lanny as well, from our past treasurer-collector.
It's a necessary service.
So how long, so how long will this cleanup process, um, actually take?
It's not really clean up, it's more catching up of work. So it's bringing everything up to date.
Okay, so at what point, um, at what point does she actually completely hand off the job to Lanny?
I believe it's, I believe it's through the end of the fiscal year. I think she'll catch up, everything.
Okay, cause there's only two weeks left, so.
Until I won.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. All those in favor? Relax, honey. Okay, uh, let's see where we, number seventeen, special articles transfer request for seventy-one hundred dollars from special appropriation Medicaid billing to special appropriation ambulance billing to cover April through June ambulance billing charges. Better motion?
So moved.
Second.
Christine?
So, this is another one where I am submitting on behalf of another department, the ambulance billing charges were higher than anticipated for fiscal twenty-three, so we're using one special article that I'm hoping don't exceed what I left in that budget line item to cover the expenditures for this other line item.
So how much, how much do you have, um, in the Medicaid billing line item?
There's twelve thousand five hundred twenty-five point nine one, and I'm utilizing seventy-one hundred. So I'm hoping that seventy-one hundred carries us through the end of the fiscal year. But there's no way to really anticipate, because I, I work with Nancy in the treasurer's office to try to estimate the charges through the end of the fiscal year, and just from the charges in the last couple of fiscal years to the charges this fiscal year, there's too many fluctuations where the billing has been higher this fiscal year comparative to the last two fiscal years.
I understand, why is that?
Just the increased ambulance calls. It's, it's for the ambulatory services.
Yeah.
So there's just been an increase of calls, so there's no way to judge and anticipate how, how much call on the fire department's gonna have, but the ambulance is needing to go out.
How much, how much of it is, I don't know if you have an idea of how much, how the ambulance service breaks down from those that are actual, like, citizen emergencies versus those that are going to, say, radius or one of the other healthcare facilities and doing those kinds of transfers? Any idea?
We need to have the fire chief answer that.
They still consider citizens.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I understand that. I'm not saying that, they're not. I, I understand that, but.
Well, more and more with the hospitals joining, I know that, um, um, somebody had an accident in my neighborhood and, um, hurt his ear, and they took him right to, to Worcester because it was considered a trauma. Anybody who's having a baby goes right to Worcester.
I know that, yeah.
So I think more and more they're sending people who would normally have stayed here right to Worcester.
Well, I know, from what I've understood, that that happens a lot, and, um, I know that that, the turnaround time has gotten increasingly bad. Worcester, from what I understand, ER, the ER at UMass is exceptionally slow. I once, actually, I had a, this was back in a couple of years ago when I was really sick, I, we sat there for like twelve hours and didn't even get seen. So it's, it's bad down there. And I've heard, um, I've heard the fire department people saying that they, that they have massive turnaround times down there. So that's probably not into the spell. Um, any comments, any other comments or questions?
Just, why would it come out of Medicaid billing?
We were just looking, cause it's part of the special, when you look at the accounts, it's just in that category, special, specialized services.
Wouldn't they need the funds for Medicaid billing?
That's what she said.
Well, when we were, when we were projecting out the, the bills, we were hoping we left enough money in there to carry through fiscal twenty-three and to borrow this to cover these bills.
Right.
So we're just kind of crossing our fingers.
Hoping for another two weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
And this isn't Medicaid billing as in Medicaid billing for ambulance services, is it?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
I would have to double check that clarification with Nancy, cause Nancy handles the, I believe, I think Nancy, cause I know Nancy pays out and enters the billing for the ambulance. I'd have to double check that she's also handling the Medicaid funds.
Okay.
But when we were looking at the projections from prior fiscal years into this fiscal year, we were looking to make sure we were leaving enough in that account and also borrowing enough during the fiscal year.
Right. Do you foresee similar issues going into the next fiscal year? As far as just these kinds of billing issues? I know it's kind of hard to predict, but.
Ambulance is, as far as the ambulance goes, it's a unknown because they've been lower in past fiscal years.
Okay.
And it's just this past fiscal year where there's been an opt care.
Okay.
So if we look at this year's history for just fiscal twenty-three, it's possible that fiscal twenty-four will near the same increase.
Right.
We can just hope maybe there's a decrease like past fiscal years.
Be nice if we could get some funds from Harrington.
That is true, that is true.
Like a pilot program or something.
Yeah, I was thinking that.
I mean, I know they just got one point five million from the FAS for, uh, equipment over there. You think they would cut us some, some checks?
That would be nice, but.
Yeah.
If they can avoid it, they will.
Well, I would, I would think they might, because didn't Harrington decide not to do obstetrics?
Long term, that two or three years ago?
They, they're deciding that, so if, if the ambulance is automatically going into Worcester, yeah.
They've been, they've been doing it in Southbridge for quite a while. It's Fitchburg right now, or Leamester they work on.
Call me up then.
Uh, they don't have to. It'd be nice if they would, like a pilot program. Cause by, by law, they don't have to pay any proper taxes.
That's true, that is true.
I think nobody's ever approached that.
Right.
Well, that's true. I mean, if we're gonna do something like that, I think we'd have to really take a serious stab at, at who would be going, we'd go after as a pilot program, under what circumstances. I mean, would it be just Harrington? Cause there's a bunch of other organizations that are nonprofits that can, that control a significant amount of property in the state for one reason or another. That might be worth considering, but that's, that, that would be a project that'd probably take, well, several months anyway to, to work out.
Another day.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm certainly in favor.
Wait till Austin straightens out theirs.
In other words, we'll be waiting to thirty-one hundred, probably. Any, uh, sorry, any further comments or questions on this?
No.
All those in favor? A germit?
Motion to a germit.
Second.
All in favor? Wait up. Seven forty-seven.